Oh, I don't know.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, it's almost 7:00 PM. Can you please put your phones on silent or vibrate this time? Good evening again. It is now 7:00 PM to start our council meeting. You have to excuse me. I'm a little bit under the weather. So if my voice goes in and out, that's, that is why. Today is August 1st, 2023, and we always start our council meetings with prayer that leads to the pleasure of allegiance. If you all will stand and join me in that, I appreciate it. All heads bowed, eyes closed. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us all to be here safely, and those who couldn't be here, we thank you for them also. Lord, we ask you to bless every home, business, and visitor in the city of East Point, and ask you to continue to bless our city spiritually and financially. Anything that is not like you that is in us, we ask you to remove it now and forgive us for even having it in us. We love you, and we will be careful to give you the glory and the honor and praise. In this, we pray, amen. Thank you, everyone. I see some new faces in the crowd, so welcome if this is your first meeting. And if you haven't been here in a while, welcome back. We're gonna start with our roll call. Good evening, Ms. Holman.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz.
Present.
Councilmember Curly.
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Here.
Mayor Owens.
Here. Approval of the agenda.
So moved?
Support.
Motion in support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
He, uh, yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Hearing of the public, the hearing of the public, you get three minutes in the beginning and three minutes closer to the end. We would love to hear your opinions, ideas, and things that we can better improve. We ask you to be respectful. We have all ages, backgrounds in the audience and also listening at home. The first hearing of the public is now open.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am Frank Fozzie, owner of property 17539 through 17605 Nine Mile Road. I am addressing you regarding my concern and how the Nine Mile Road reconstruction is being handled. I hired an attorney, Mr. Stephen Bagni, with Clark Hill to assist me in this matter. He has sent all of you a copy of a letter which he sent to Assistant City Manager Kim Holman. Mr. Bagni had a thorough title research done on one of my properties, which shows an easement stating, and I quote, "The granters herein reserve a perpetual easement over the north, 17.5 feet of the south, 21 feet of the herein conveyed property, for parking privileges without restrictions or limitations by the grantee. Said easement is to run with the land and is binding upon grantees its successor and assigns," unquote. Ms. Holman responded by calling this a unique property. How does the city know that this is a unique property? Was a thorough search done on all these easements? It took us over a week to get a search done. If Mr. Bagni's letter was news to the city, how could Ms. Holman know that this property was unique? If the city already knew about the easement, why were they proceeding as though it didn't exist? I have to believe that they did not know of this because I don't want to believe that the city is actively disregarding the Constitution. But how many other properties have the same language in their chain of title? The deed that retained the easement was around the time the city wired the Nine Mile Road in the early 1970s, and the property conveyed by that easement was reserved for a private road in the 1933 plat. What are the chances that we happen to do a title search on the one property that had an easement? How many properties have already had their parking taken away with this language in their easement? Other impacted businesses need to look at their title work to see if they have the same benefits. It is in a quitclaim deed to the city in 1971. The city cannot just come and take our easement right away. It is the property owner's constitutional right. If it is an easement for parking, it needs to remain for parking unless just compensation is paid. That is in the Fifth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, part of the Bill of Rights that we all learned about in school. Michigan's Constitution says something similar. Thank you.
Time is up, sir. You've righted it. Thank you.
We are taking notes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mary Hall Rayford, East Point resident. Something happened here on July 11th that I discovered after the meeting ended, and it's a bit disturbing. And I know you've admonished people to address the council, not the audience, and I can appreciate that because with the back and forth between audience members, sometimes that leads to something else that could be a little dangerous to some of, someone else. So one of the things I encourage you to do in the event of an exchange between an audience member and someone speaking, that someone would speak up earlier and put a stop to it. As it happens, some people were threatened in the parking lot, and I don't condone threats or bullies. That's a coward's way out. So I would hope we would not see that here because if we have to resort to bullying because people don't agree with us, it's a really sad state of affairs. We don't have to agree to get along, and we can disagree agreeably. So I would hope to see that kind of change in the future for everyone speaking and for every audience member to, hopefully, hold their tongue until it's their turn to speak. We don't really need that kind of animosity floating around the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this time?
Hello, members of the council. Madam Mayor, I'm David Deroni from Deroni True Value Hardware on Nine Mile. My family's operated the business since 1991. We've been business in East Point here for 33 years now. I'd like to get some more information, and I guess I'm curious if businesses that are going to be impacted by this Nine Mile strategic corridor plan, if they've been contacted individually to let them know what ramifications might affect their business regarding parking. There's also concerns when I read the information that's on the city's website about the timeframe. Like, we're in part of the Nine Mile section that would be Phase 3, and that phase looks like it's a five-year phase, and Phase 2 is like a four-year phase. So if it's, if it's gonna be a true nine-year phase for this project, if that, it just means from start to completion, or if that means for nine years, we're gonna have orange barrels on Nine Mile because that's gonna have a devastating impact on the retail businesses in the city. If that, if somehow it can be compressed so that the company doing the project doesn't have us impacted. Customers will find other places to shop. They'll change their shopping patterns. When Grashit was torn up, you know, north of here, it kind of turned into a ghost town because people just know, everybody avoids these areas that are so, under such heavy construction. So I don't know if that's something that you have a better timeframe on, but I'd be curious to know. But I'd also like to know, again, if businesses have been contacted individually to say, hey, this is what it would be, this is what we're thinking for your particular business and how it might impact your parking setup. It, it, it sounds great in some capacities for sure to have new and improved, but some of the things that I see in the, some of the quotes, whether some of those quotes were by residents that are just putting in, you know, their concepts, it's nice when, one of the quotes was, they wanted, require the businesses to provide and maintain landscaping. The businesses have a lot we're already maintaining and doing, and it's expensive to maintain a business. When you put in grass and green belts, it's, in wintertime, when there's salt in the road, salt in Nine Mile, the salt kills the grass. Everything along the curb gets killed. And what comes back in the spring is not grass then, and tends to be weeds because the weeds do better than grass does. There's no sprinkling systems out there, so we rely on Mother Nature to keep things green, but she doesn't always provide enough rain to keep things green. It sounds great to have trees out there, but the trees block the businesses' signage. So if you want people to come to the city, they've got to have viable businesses to come to, but if businesses lose parking...
Your time is up, sir. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, but you get additional three minutes, and we will be talking about this. So some of those questions will be answered if you stick with us, if you want to. And thank you for investing in the city. You've been, you all have been here for a long time, a long time. I've supported your business, and you also have supported me, so thank you in advance. Anyone else would like to speak? Anyone else? Saying none. First hearing of the public is now closed. Approval of the minutes?
Madam Mayor, I would move to receive and file the minutes of the regular meeting of July 18th, 2023.
Support.
Motion in support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
We have no scheduled hearings, no unfinished business, and we're gonna go straight to reports from administration with our city manager. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor and council. Well, first up, we have the primary on Tuesday, August 8th. So if you have not already registered to vote, you can stop by the clerk's office during their open hours. We also have Saturday hours, this coming Saturday, August 5th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. You can stop in, register to vote, get your absentee ballot. If you have any questions on that process, you can always reach out to the clerk's office or myself, and we can certainly answer those. But again, this coming Tuesday is the August primary, so get out, vote, and, and state your voice, share your voice. Again, we are here on Saturday, so it's weekend hours, this coming weekend for the election. So if the current hours in City Hall don't work for you to register, you can always stop in on Saturday, and you can register to vote with us here and get your absentee ballot. We do have water filters still available. Primary location is at the library. They also have some evening and weekend hours at DPW and here at City Hall. If you need a replacement cartridge, we also have those still available, so please stop in. MDHS does recommend that you change those out every two months. So if you have not changed out your, your filter, please stop in, get a cartridge, and replace your filter every two months as recommended. Our, well, actually, I'll leave the pension grant to you, Randy. That's some good news for finance. And then Councilmember DeMonico did ask to give an update on the lead line replacement program in terms of our current numbers. So initially, in, in 2018, 2019, on the initial inventory of lead lines, it was identified that there was 1,313 lead lines in the city, but that also included several unknown or unidentified lines at that time. We have been working, AEW and our incredible DPW team has been working since our action level exceedance in the fall to identify all of those lead lines that were unknown at the time. And at this time, we've identified 2,264 current lines. And since 2020, the city has replaced 692 lines, which is an incredible amount of work. There's been at least three sometimes per day that are being replaced and has been an incredible program. So we thank AEW for all of their efforts, DPW, council for consistently investing in the water infrastructure in the city, and it certainly is an, an all-teamwork project to really see this through. And then, as well as mentioned at the last council meeting, Senator Kleinfeld and Representative Edwards were able to secure $10 million to assist with the program to continue moving forward and replacing lead lines. So with that, mayor, council, I can answer any questions that you guys may have.
Do you have any questions for our city manager? I had one. It was pertaining to Mr. Deion. Did I say it? Deron? Did I say it right? Deroni? I'm sorry. So unique. Now, I believe we did send a, a letter to all the businesses on Nine Mile, correct, when this was going on, and if not?
Correct. So all, all businesses on Nine Mile did receive letters, and then they are being contacted directly during their phases of design. So the strategic plan that was mentioned is separate, and I think Ryan is planning and can go into more detail on the first agenda item. But the strategic plan is different than the design plan for reconstruction. So the strategic plan was adopted by council with the idea of what, Nine Mile? In kind of the engagement plan on how the community wishes to see Nine Mile, the actual reconstruction plan is, is different than, than that book. But we can allow Ryan on the first item to kind of go into detail on the planning process for Nine Mile reconstruction.
And I also believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that we had a scheduled hearing for that? Did we have a scheduled hearing for, um, for that? Because usually, when things that use, we have a scheduled hearing so that those people that's affected can have, where the community can have some say-so on that. Did we do something on that or no?
We did have a hearing back.
Okay.
Well, before, during the design of the first phase, we did have a hearing as far as how, the design itself, whether we wanted to do a three-lane or five-lane road. That was the only public hearing that we did have on, on the Nine Mile project.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I think that's all from me. We're gonna go to our finance director, Mr. Blum. Good evening, sir.
Yes, Madam Mayor and council. Thank you for my, for not stealing that one. That's all I had. We did get notification that we were approved for the pension grant. The paperwork has been signed. The Treasury will be depositing a little over $6 million into our MERS pension fund by August 30th. And then that will be in there for the next actuary, and hopefully we'll see some decent numbers by the end of this year. But that was very good news, and we're excited to see that happen. That's all I had.
Thank you. Good news.
That's big. Big news.
Very big.
Any questions for Mr. Blum? Saying none. Going to our city attorney. Good evening, Mr. Albright.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I do have a couple of topics to discuss with the council this evening. The first is the renaming of city parks. As councils aware, resident Karen Maraisian circulated a petition containing approximately, I believe it was 130 signatures back in June to rename one of the city parks after Harvey Creach. Upon looking at the city ordinances, the city does not have an ordinance to provide for the renaming of public parks. And so after doing some further research, I located a, an ordinance in the city of Detroit that was passed by the city of Detroit back in 2019 that provides a very specific procedure where a person who must be a resident picks up an application from City Hall, fills that out, submits a fee, and then it goes through a process where it's reviewed by a committee, and ultimately, it is a decision of the city council whether to pass a resolution to change the name of the city park. And I'm looking for a little guidance this evening to see if the council wants to go in that direction. If so, I can draft an ordinance that's modeled after the city Detroit ordinance and, and change it to the city's liking as well and get it before the council for consideration.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. First of all, I agree. I think we need an ordinance. But my one question would be, who makes the decision if we decide to change the name of a park? Who makes the final decision of which park name would be changed?
The way the ordinance would be structured is that that decision, almost like how the planning commission is based, they do a lot of the legwork. They hold a public hearing. They'll hear from the public and get some ideas, and then come up with a recommendation to the city council for further discussion. So in a nutshell, that's how it would work. And of course, city council, it's going to be the city's ordinance, so whatever the council wants in that ordinance, we will put in there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other?
Is it, is there a consensus on council to, for our office to draft a proposed ordinance?
You want a consensus, Madam Mayor? I'll give you my consensus.
I was just gonna say, I'd, I, I think I'll, I could review everything you, you sent us. I'd just be interested in maybe following up later. I don't know about it this time, if I'd be interested in that.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman DeMonico. There's some other questions that I, that I would be wondering, like the, like, what is the financial impact of that change in science and so forth and so on? Also, I guess the other concern that I have is, are we eroding somebody else's legacy to put, just to start a new one? So it's just a, it's just a thought, and so I think I, I wouldn't want to make that decision on the fly, just like right now. I mean, I know you provided information, but I have some more things I need to think over as well.
Well, could we be more definitive? Both of you said at a later date, not right now. That's fine, but can we get more specific and say, you know, first meeting in December or the first meeting in January, at least we would have something to go on. Because if we say later, people are gonna say, when are you doing it? So could one of you two give us the justice for it, when it would come back?
Well, for me, I mean, I, I'm not even certain that I want to move forward with it just because even just for the sake of taking somebody, like, for instance, Kennedy Park, you're taking John F. Kennedy's name away from the park. Depending on the sentiments with certain people, that, that might be a negative impact for some and maybe positive for others. So before, I don't want to give a date and then say that I'm going forward with it or willing to go forward with it, and I'm not certain of that yet. So I don't want to misspeak, and I don't want to say something that's inaccurate.
Well, I will say, Madam Mayor, if I may, I've been trying to work with the city manager to find out how the different parks got named, and you're right, I, I would not consider at all for the Memorial Field or Kennedy Park or Spindler. Spindler Park, with all that property, was given to us by the Spindler family back in the 1800s. So there's absolutely no way that I would change that for anybody. So I, I still would like to find out where the other parks got their name from, and I, I don't have a clue where to start from. Maybe you, you all do have an idea of where, how can we find that out?
That information may be over at the library.
Oh, all right.
And I know that Mayor Pixley, in the past, I believe, has authored a couple of books on the city's history. I could certainly contact Suzanne Pixley and ask her if any of her books have any history on the parks here in our city.
All right.
I think I read those books. I don't think it does, but you can ask them. But we do have a, a East Point Historical Society. They might be able to help with that. And McComb County Historical Society as well, so that might be somewhere to go as far as research.
Yeah, and if there's any residents as well, or maybe perhaps people watching at home that may have, someone who's lived in the city their entire life, may have some insight, some information on how the various parks were named.
All right. You all want to move along, or you want to continue to talk about the parks?
I'm off, sir.
Go ahead. What's your name?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Second issue I had, I have been contacted by the attorneys who are representing the three top score-getters for medical marijuana provisioning licenses here in our city. And there is an interest on all three of their parts to request that the city council amend its ordinances to allow adult use or recreational marijuana. And I've informed all three of the attorneys that I'm not sure if that is a direction that the city wants to go in at this time, but I would certainly bring it before the city council to get the city council's input on that. If the city wishes to essentially table this discussion for a period of time, and we could revisit it at some time in the future, or if the city, if the council is interested in looking into that further and the processes that would be involved, that's certainly something that the city attorney's office, working with city administration, can, you know, we can, we can begin that process, but it is, I think it's something that definitely, if the city wants to go in that direction, that it's something that needs to be done carefully.
Yeah, um, my, I'm sorry. I guess my concern with that is, one, the criteria that was laid out for people to get the medical marijuana in the city was very specific, from, from what I understand. And so to just grant somebody the rights to have recreational, in my opinion, I think that's, we might as well just walk into the court now and get ready. And my, my concern is, what is that financial impact gonna be on, to the city? Are we prepared for that, you know? And so, for me, I'm not, I'm not in favor of moving forward in that direction. You know, are we paying to, just like for these people to contact you, is that costing us money? And then if we move forward in that direction, will going to court cost us money and then all the other particulars in between? So our responsibility is to do the best we can with the financial resources, and that one gives me a lot of apprehensions. So that's just my opinion. I can't speak on behalf of council, but I wouldn't feel comfortable with that. I think we, we'd just be opening up a can of worms inside of a big sinkhole standing over the abyss, you know? I just think it'd be...
It'd work.
That's it. That's all I got.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I, I agree. I share Mr. Baker's sentiments. I think at this stage, the legal implications are too far-reaching, and without more information of what we have, I don't see anything right now that... Oh, thank you. Mr. Gasson gave me a signal. Yeah, I, I think the legal implications are too far-reaching right now. And we would be opening a literal Pandora's box, especially given the requirements that were set in place just to get the medical marijuana, and to go back now and make a change. I, I echo his sentiments.
Anyone else would like to speak on this, Councilman?
Sure, and I'll agree with the prior two councilpersons, Baker and Cobb Muniz. I, I won't describe it as an abyss, but not at this time. I, I would be interested in, in discussing that.
And I, I would say that, yeah, I, don't give me that abyss thing. I don't want that. I'm not, I'm not prepared or ready to, to discuss anything further on the marijuana situation. I'm not, I'm not prepared or ready to discuss anything further on the marijuana situation.
I do have information on the deed for the Military Museum. That has been executed, has been recorded. All of the language that the council specified was included in that deed. And so the title to that property has been transferred. And thank you, Councilmember Cobb Muniz, for really pushing in that direction so it could get done. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And council's receipt of our monthly status report. I am happy to answer any questions or any other questions the council may have.
Any questions, anything?
Just thank you for your due diligence to make sure that that was taken care of. I know that there were two that were taken care of this week and, or last week. And I appreciate both your and administration's work to make sure that we move forward as a city. Thank you.
Happy to help.
Thank you. Thank you all to all the directors. Our chief of police, would you like to say anything at this time? I don't want to leave you out.
No, I appreciate it. Just glad to be here. Glad to be working here. And things are going really well. Again, we're getting one step closer, like every day, to add an agreement with the school district. So I still have my fingers crossed. I'm not quite holding my breath, but we're doing it really well. So I'm looking forward to continuing working here.
Thank you for your service, sir. I'm going to new business, item A, contract modification, Furwood and Birchwood Water Main replacement project, council.
Madam Mayor, I would move to approve the contract modification for the Furwood Avenue and Birchwood Avenue Water Main Replacement Project, AEW, project number 01450677 in the amount of $77,244.95.
Support.
Motion of support. Please call the row.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobb Muniz?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Next item, item B, discussion on Nine Mile reconstruction, Grashit to Tuscany. And I don't know if council will want to start it off, but we do have Mr. Kern from AEW. You will probably be answering some of the questions that people in the audience had as well. But before we go to that, council, did you have anything to say before I give it to Mr. Kern?
All right. In my opinion, I think he should go ahead and then we'll find what questions we might have after he gets through speaking.
Agreed.
Okay. Does anybody, again, does anybody have any questions before I get to Mr. Kern? Okay, Mr. Kern, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As you're, I guess just to start, as you're aware, we're currently in the process of reconstructing the first phase of Nine Mile from the west city limits to Grashit. That involves the replacement of the water main on the north side of Nine Mile, as well as Consumers Energy replacing two gas mains, a high-pressure, medium-pressure gas main on the south side. And that work is complete. And we're currently working on the road reconstruction phase of the project. And we're hoping to see concrete pavement start there next week on the north side. Hoping that the, or we're expecting the batch plan, their concrete batch plan's gonna be set up here at the Department of Public Works. So once that's set up, you're gonna see a lot more progress out on that job. We're currently finishing up the design of the second phase from Grashit to Tuscany, which is very similar to the first phase. It's gonna be a five-lane road, similar to what's there now, same footprint basically as what's there now. The project's going to also involve the replacement of the water main. It's a 12-inch water main. That replacement's gonna happen on the south side of Nine Mile. And then Consumers Energy is currently replacing their two gas mains on the north side of the road. Their work should be done here this fall. We would be looking at doing the water main replacement work over the winter months. And then the reconstruction would take place starting next spring and complete, be completed late summer, early fall of 2024. We do have the third phase coming up in the future, too. That'll be from Tuscany to I-94, which we're also getting federal money for through an earmark. That work, the water main work, is only from Tuscany to Kelly in that phase. East of Kelly is a newer water main, so that won't be too much disruption with the water main. But that work would take place in the winter, '24 to '25, with reconstruction to take place in 2025. And that would complete the reconstruction of Nine Mile all the way across the city at the end of 2025. All three phases of this project are getting 81.85% of the construction costs funded through federal funding that the city, every three years, the McComb County Federal Aid Committee requests projects from all the communities. They're basically road projects. They have to be major roads that are eligible for federal funding. We submit projects to put on their transportation improvement program. That committee chooses which projects move forward, and then we get federal funding for those. The project that we're proposing here is, again, a nine-inch-thick concrete pavement on a 10-inch-thick aggregate base. Everything's gonna be brand-new, new aggregate base, new underdrain underneath both sides of the road for better drainage, all-new storm sewer facilities, all-new handicap ramps. There will be new sidewalk on the majority of the south side because of the new water main being replaced. There'll be adjustments to the grades of the road, new driveway approaches throughout. Some of the unique things with this project, I've walked the job with administration as well, as we looked at areas where we could create more green space if possible. The right-of-way, the right-of-way varies throughout the project. On the north side of Nine Mile in this next phase, there is quite a bit of right-of-way. We did not need to obtain any additional easements on the north side. On the south side, we did have to obtain easements. Quite a bit of the sidewalk is either outside of the public right-of-way or it's partially in the public right-of-way and partially on private property. So we have obtained easements. We've obtained not all, but the majority of the easements to date to get that sidewalk in the public right-of-way. There are several driveways that we're looking at eliminating. There are several properties that have either two or three driveway accesses, and we're looking to eliminate at least one of those. And we've worked with several of the property owners there to decide which drive approach to be removed. Or we reduce the width of several approaches. There are several approaches that have a significant width to them that's not necessary. So we're reducing the width of several approaches as well. So those, those things will create some additional green space. On the north side, the majority of the north side, the sidewalk is closer to the road where the right-of-way is not necessarily a foot behind the sidewalk. It's several feet behind the sidewalk. So there's some paved areas along the north side, too, that we can create as green space as well. The Refuge Island by the police station is proposed to disappear. That Refuge Island has been nothing but problems. It's constantly getting run over. I mean, there's nothing left to that Refuge Island, so we're proposing to eliminate that. There will still be an island down at Nine Mile. As mentioned, there are some parking concerns along Nine Mile as well. There are four sites along Nine Mile where there is parking. There is on-street parking or semi-on-street parking. One of those areas is East Detroit Bakery in that block. We have been able to reconfigure the parking in that block so that there could still be parking out in front of East Detroit Bakery. Right now, it's angled parking there. We would be looking to reduce the number of spaces there and make it parallel parking in order to make it code. They do have a parking lot on the side of their building as well that has 15 parking spaces. Between Lambrecht and Tuscany on the north side, where Detroit Wing Company is and where Mr. Fozzie's property is, there's currently angled parking and parallel parking there. And the angled parking, you have to back out onto Nine Mile. It is a safety concern. There's also a site-distance concern at that intersection as well. We are proposing to eliminate the majority of that parking there. We did, last week, we were notified by Mr. Fozzie of a sidewalk easement, or not a sidewalk easement, but a parking easement, that does exist in front of one of the properties on that block. It does not exist on all of the properties. It is only on the one property owned by Mr. Fozzie. We did do a search of all those properties that, where the parking is affected on the north side. That is the only property that we found an executed parking easement that is there. So we will have to accommodate that. But the plan is to eliminate the on-street parking within that block where there is no easement currently for safety concerns. And then east of Tuscany, there's also a small section that's similar to, it's set up the same way as between Lambrecht and Tuscany as well. The last location where there's a parking issue is at, on the south side, east of Rain Street, where there's currently a concrete strip that's seven feet wide between the sidewalk and the roadway. It's not technically a designated parking area. It does not meet code. Parallel parking, you have to have, typically you have to have at least eight feet of width. The city ordinance actually calls for nine feet of width for a parallel parking space. And there's currently only seven feet there now. And then there's a seven-foot continuous sidewalk in front of that property. And with a sidewalk behind the curb, per the city ordinance and per FHWA standards, it has to be at least eight feet wide. So there's not enough width there to provide parallel parking at that location as well. The plan there is to also eliminate that parking as well. With the elimination of that parking, parking would have to take place on the side streets or if they have available parking in the back or in the alley, they would have to park there. As with the current phase, we're also looking at enhancing the crosswalks with the continental crosswalks to make it more presentable as well. I think that really, those are kind of the unique items on that. We've talked about with the strategic plans, some streetscape work, plantings that could take place as well along Nine Mile. Those items are not eligible through the federal aid program. Those are projects that we're looking at that could be done in the future as a separate project after this work is done. I think that's where the strategic plan in the four to five years comes from, I think, is future enhancements to the corridor that would come outside of the federal aid project. I think that pretty much covers the project. But we'll be working with M.DOT here shortly to finalize these plans. M.DOT will have the final say on the plans for the approval of the design in order to get it out to bid for construction next spring. I'll open up to any questions council has.
Any questions, council?
Sure, Mayor. Thanks, Mayor. I've got a few questions. I guess, if we go backwards, I guess maybe my biggest one for now, pick one, and then you do one. Maybe we go back and forth a little bit. When we're talking about the future for doing green, you know, green belt, you know, things that are not, would not be covered under the federal funding, I am just concerned that if we do just push that down the line, it's not going to work as we would want it to. I think we should be planning that in now. You know, we don't need, obviously, we'd wait until the road's down to start that work, but I think we should be planning it in now or else I feel like there's a potential that it won't end up happening. So I guess if you could address that, or explain, like, I guess, I'm just, when I've walked down this, from Grashit to Tuscany, this area, there's like a, I mean, it looks like a foot to me. Maybe it's two feet wide of green belt. Are we talking the sidewalk will be pushed way back? Because it's a very close sidewalk for how fast the road is.
Yeah, in certain areas, yeah, the right-of-way is tight there to where it would only be a few feet behind the back of curb, the sidewalk. There are some areas where we are pushing the sidewalk back a little bit, not a whole lot. But yeah, there are several areas where there's not a lot of right-of-way in this phase. Not like the first phase that we're doing now. There's definitely more right-of-way. The third phase has quite a bit of right-of-way to work with. So it varies throughout Nine Mile. But we've been having continuous discussions as far as what we want to do in the future with restoration. In fact, I do have a meeting with some of the administration later this week, actually, to kind of pinpoint what areas we want to look at and potential grant opportunities that we could apply for, whether that be the TAP grant through the, through Michigan Department of Transportation. There's some other grant opportunities out there. Obviously, we would be applying for those to try to get additional funding for the city to do further restoration. And not only planting, you know, native plantings that would be low maintenance, but, you know, benches, sitting areas, you know, whatever enhancements we can do to make that corridor look better.
Well, if I could pick one specific, like the rain, you know, you're talking about rain in Nine Mile there. I think you're, there's like two parking spots right in front of that building, it looks like. You know which portion I'm referring?
Yep.
So would we be, I guess, just for, so I have a specific example here. It looks like, you know, the, can't be a couple feet wide, the green belt. Would we, what you're proposing right now is eliminate those spots and move the sidewalk back there? Or what would, what's the plan?
So the plan would be to eliminate the concrete strip that's between the sidewalk and the street and make that a gra, yeah, vegetated area, grass area, and then the sidewalk where it is now would remain. The sidewalk there is up against the buildings.
We're on the, let's see, what side am I on, the north side?
Oh, you're on the north side?
Oh, okay. You were talking about the south side.
I was talking on the south side. On the nor, on the north side, there's several areas where we could do some plantings or something, both, on both sides of the sidewalk. We have quite a bit of right-of-way behind the sidewalk to we, where we could do, we could do, we could do enhancements on both sides of the sidewalk.
Okay. I guess it's good for question one.
And I guess part of that with the sidewalk, too, we're trying to keep the sidewalk as continuous as possible, too. So in some, like I say, in some areas, in some areas, the right-of-way might go further, much further back. But we're trying to keep the sidewalk, you know, a continuous straight line as much as we can and not try to zigzag it based upon the right-of-way, right-of-ways that are there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I guess that would go to one of my points, just the continuity of sidewalk, particularly for people who are walking or who have children or who need assistive devices to get through the city. How many areas are there that, that would be affected by that, a change in continuity?
There are a few, there are a few jogs in the sidewalk that we are still proposing. And it's either based upon obstructions that are out there or, again, because of the right-of-way. But we are trying to keep it as continuous as possible.
And then, speaking specifically to Mr. Fozzie's easement, how many spaces are we talking about in terms of actual parking spaces?
Based upon that easement that exists, it appears that we could fit at least one, maybe two, parallel parking spaces within that easement. There is a drive approach that overlaps into that easement.
And then the last question I had was more of a question to confirm because I know Mr. Deroni had some concerns based on what he read online about the length of the total project. But based on what you've shared with us tonight, these phases are anticipated to be completed within the next two years, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions, council?
Yeah, I got one. Are we, is this all federal money? Or can you use, like, money, street fund money or anything like that? Like, how is this?
So, yeah, so like 81.85% of the construction costs will come from federal funding. And then the remaining match will come out of the city's Act 51 major funding. And then all the soft costs as far as engineering, inspection, construction administration surveying would be 100% paid through the city through the Act 51 major road funding, which there is, there is funding available in that account to cover those costs.
So the majority of it would be just through, would that be like grants or federal grants? Is that, I just want to make sure I understand.
That the federal portion of it?
Yeah.
It's not necessarily a grant. It's federal funding that's available to all communities that is kind of competitive, I guess you could say, to get it. But it's not necessarily a grant program. But it is federal dollars. It's administered through the state, but it is federal money that comes through the state.
Okay. It's, but no street funds or street scape or anything like that?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, that cannot be paid through federal funding.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, council?
Sure, Mayor. And some of this, I guess, might be questions for maybe our city manager or I guess if anybody else from city management that would want to answer. I'm looking at our, you know, the Nine Mile Corridor Plan that we're talking about, our Nine Mile Strategic Corridor Plan. And I guess as we're describing this here from at least Grashit to Tuscany, you know, we've talked about how there is a little bit more space west of Grashit. I'm just having a hard time seeing how we're meeting some of these objectives that we had put in this plan. Like, the very first objective is provide for complete streets on all roadways, emphasizing safe, attractive, and comfortable access and travel for all ages and abilities. So I guess that's especially why I'm talking about comfortable because, for sure, it's a little uncomfortable to me, at least when I've walked up and down Nine Mile, when, with how close to Nine Mile you are. I'm just trying to figure out how we're, how we're meeting these objectives. And I guess on the comfortable part, what is, what's the downfall of going back and forth? I guess maybe more of a specific question, maybe Mr. Kern about keeping the sidewalk just straight all the way, you know, a little zigzag. Why is, why is that a big deal, I guess, if that makes it more comfortable? Or we have a little more greens, you know, we could make a little more green space between the street and the sidewalk. Why is that a big deal?
I guess, as far as, you're asking, as far as continuity, what, why we need to have it is?
Well, when you're saying continuity, you mean the same width from the, or same distance from the street, right? Is what you mean by continuity?
Yes, correct. Yeah. Yeah, the same distance from the street, yes.
Why is that so important?
I think just, just as far as pedestrian use, it's just easier if it's a continuous line. We try to keep that as much as possible. I mean, that's just kind of normal practice, I guess, to do that. I mean, it's not, you can zigzag it all you want if you want to do that. But I think just for continuity, it just makes sense to make it go straight through. And for the most part, we are doing that already, or it is really, for the most part.
So and I guess then maybe part- So, and I, I guess then maybe part of this, Ms. Walton, would be my question to you. I guess like how are we, well, if we're not talking as much about like greenscape or trees or things like that, how are we going to meet all of our goals we set in this Nine Mile Corridor Plan? I'm just a little concerned that we're, we're not going to be able to meet some of these goals.
Sure, thank you. I think one of the things to remember, especially when we're going through a planning phase, is the difference between theory and practice. While we engage the community and we have ideas and we come up with things, when you're actually out, boots on the ground and you have engineers that are actually measuring things to see what's actually practical in certain areas of the community, you realize that there may not be as much opportunity to fulfill 100% of the plan. But as Mr. Kern had mentioned, you're reducing access points, so it's making it safer, safer for pedestrians. You're lining it up so that, as Councilmember Muniz had mentioned, people that are walking with strollers that we've put in grants on Kelly Road, those are lining up so that you're not zigzagging through the street and extending yourself while you're crossing the street, while you're with a, you know, baby in a, in a, in a stroller. And then adding additional green space, while it might not be as much in every single area, there is still an effort to increase the green space and increase the separation between the cars and pedestrians that are on the road. So there are certainly a lot of measures here that Ryan and the entire DPW team, our entire administration has gone out actually on each one of these phases to review, to do as much as we can that is in the plan. But again, that theory and practice is different when you're actually boots on the ground to see if you can implement all of the things that are in that plan.
How many trees are we adding for this section that we're talking about right now?
We haven't determined how many yet.
So if, well, but aren't they in the drawing here? You know, I'm certainly not a civil engineer. But if the, there's some trees that are on the removal plan page and then not on the construction plan phase? Are they being removed?
Yeah, there are some trees that we have to remove in order to pay, to get the paving machine to go through there. We need four feet behind the curb in order to get the paving machine through. So there are some trees that have to be removed. Those trees will be replaced, but we just haven't determined yet what, where those locations will be. And that'll be part of the meeting that I have with the city later this week.
So, okay, so, because I think I counted 14 trees being removed.
That sounds about right.
And I don't think we have too many more than that, actually, in this section of road. But so then, how come, yeah, how come we don't have the replacements in the, the plan now then? We have the whole plan drawn out, but the, the trees we're planting to replace those are not, not in the plan right now?
That's, we still have to determine that this week.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Mayor.
Our CDM fellow, John Kraus, is working very closely with the county in terms of trees that we are being offered to plant in public right of ways. I think we're looking at, they have a thousand trees, although I think our DPW can't handle that many. So we are definitely working closely with the engineers as it relates to adding trees into as many right of ways as we can.
Okay, and then you, you were talking about curb cuts were reducing some then. How many do we have planned to reduce? It sounded like there were at least a few businesses interested. How many do we have confirmed at this point?
I don't have the exact number, but I want to say it was around eight to 10 drive approaches that were reducing and probably about the same that were eliminating.
Okay, eight to 10 reducing and eight to 10 eliminating, okay. And then, what was my follow-up on that? Well, I guess I'll look closer. I mean, so how, and I guess maybe this is maybe back to you, Ms. Walton. Are we, like, when we're talking about all this, are we, like, I guess we're, you know, McKenna is not here today. I thought maybe they'd be here to discuss this so that we're making sure we hit these goals with, that are in the Nine Mile Strategic Corridor Plan. And I guess, yeah, Mr. Kraus, I guess we'll call him our tree man right now, getting us a ton of trees. I think we should, I guess, are we making sure that we're, we're meeting all these goals as we're drawing this out? I guess, I was just surprised to see so many trees missing and not, you know, replaced in the plan, I guess, at this point. And then also the, I guess I thought we were doing more, oh, that was, that's what my other question was for Mr. Kern. Sorry, one more quick question for Mr. Kern. The crossing, you know, there's not many places to cross for pedestrians right now, technically, right? A lot of people cross wherever, which is not too surprising, because I think you can go like a quarter of a mile without a, a crossing. But we're removing one refuge island, and I thought a long time ago, we talked about, we'd put some more of those in because it calms traffic, but then it also helps for people to cross, because I, I mean, frankly, people are going, you know, I think we can give as many, you know, I think maybe the director agree, you can give as many jaywalking tickets out as you want, but I think people are gonna still jaywalk. And if we can make it a better situation, I think we should, since we've got this opportunity.
Currently, crossings are at all the traffic signals. Those are really the only crossings that currently exist, and that's what we're still proposing at this time. We did look at adding additional crossings. It is difficult in this phase because the streets don't align across from each other in most cases. So it's, it's difficult to get a refuge island in this phase in order to make that work, in order to make a crosswalk work and make it safe for pedestrians.
So then, yeah, Ms. Walton, about like, I guess, what work, McKenna and Mr. Kraus working with AEW here, are we making sure we can at least hit as many of these objectives as possible from our city council approved plan?
Yes, we've worked collaboratively with all of admin. Our planner has actually been out, boots on the ground as well, on the areas that we were proposing. She's been out with admin. Finance director has been out. The director was initially out. We have Mr. Haynes, or Chief Haynes now. But as council's aware, we've brought in fire, PD, all of the powers that be that really are involved and have an impact and are going to be impacted and really their, their professional opinions have been sought out in this project. And we are appreciative of Ryan for being so collaborative with all of the members of, of administration for that to be done.
Done, council?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. Mr. Kern, when is that meeting you are supposed to have for final, finalizing things on the plan?
It's Thursday, we're meeting Thursday afternoon for, for us, yeah, for the, that was just to discuss the restoration part of the project.
Okay. Can you let council know about that? Maybe we want to be a part of that conversation in a way. The reason I said that is because a lot of the votes that, well, majority of all the votes go through council, and we want to also be a part of and see what's going on as well than just be up here voting on things that we're, we're not always a part of the conversation. So I would like, you know, seeing the blueprint and seeing the numbers and seeing what's going on. So when people ask us, we are informed, not because we're not here almost every day, like you are working, you know, on these projects every day, but we still need to know what's going on because they elected us to, to do those things. So if, I can even meet you tomorrow or something like that, just, you know, let us know when those conversations are happening so we can be a part of that discussion too. I know administration is already too, but when the bills come and the, and the things have to be passed and the money has to go through, we have to vote on that. And we want to know now, we just don't want to be voters up here. We want to actually be a part of the conversations too.
Sure.
Okay, I know we have a, one of the business owners up here, a t-shirt guru, also now one of the organizations for the autism organization for families in our community. I know she's gonna be impacted. She's right next door to that, that restaurant you were talking about earlier. What's the, what's the chicken wing?
That's the Detroit Wing Company.
The Detroit Wing Company.
Okay.
I know me and you had a conversation. I know that's, majority, she shares that parking with them too. So we talked about how we're gonna service the businesses when we take away that, those parking. I know me and you had a conversation about the sidewalk parking and trying to put some type of language up for people to park for those businesses. Now, let's talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, I know we had mentioned about possibly putting some signage up on the side streets that would be for parking for businesses only right off of Nine Mile, where those businesses would be affected by parking to where we would have to have them park on the side streets. We could definitely do something like that.
Now, do we talk to, we'll have some type of conversation with the residents over there? As far as, do we need to or we just?
I mean, that's up to the city if you want to have that discussion or not with the residents. I don't know if it would necessarily be a.
I guess I would have to see how, how the parking would be if we were talking about how many parking spaces and things like that. Because if I was a house by business and then cars are parking in front of my house and things like that, I would want to know what's going on and have some type of, you know, idea to prepare me for a change. And I think sometimes when we do stuff, we don't prepare our residents for that change. We just, sometimes we remind them or tell them, but it's like we don't guide them a solution to help them with that change just to come. So I think that's something we want to think about too, as far as parking places and how that looks too.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions, concerns?
Sure, Mayor, you made me think of one other one. What, what about, Mr. Kern, about back end parking instead of, it seems, well, especially if we're talking about in front of Detroit Wing Company, parallel parking obviously takes up a lot more space. And yeah, I haven't been a big fan of pulling into those spots forward and then trying to back into Nine Mile either. What about backing in, what's it called, diagonal?
Yeah, you're talking angled, angled parking still, but backing in. I mean, that is something that is acceptable to MDOT, but again, it does create a safety issue again, because you have cars that are stopping on Nine Mile and then having to back into a space. So it does create a safety issue. And there's, there's also a depth issue too with, between the sidewalk and the street. I think with the angled parking in front of Detroit Wing Company, I'd have to look again. It was pretty close whether angled parking would still work there or not, but it's just a safety concern there, as well as a sight distance concern at that corner. If you do come up to the corner of Lambrecht and Nine Mile, heading south on Lambrecht, you cannot see going, you cannot see to the east on Nine Mile when those vehicles are parked on the street. So it creates a conflict point when cars are coming on Nine Mile and people turn out on, out from Lambrecht because they can't see vehicles coming, heading westbound on Nine Mile.
All right, council, any other opinions, concerns, ideas? Okay, saying, thank you, Mr. Kern.
No problem.
Was some of your questions answered tonight?
Yes.
Okay, good.
No.
No, not yet. Okay, we'll get back with you at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Because we probably can't answer everything and, you know, in this session. You're welcome, okay. Going to item C, adoption of resolution number 23-1963, depositing or investing public funds. Deputy Treasurer as authorized official, council.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 23-1963, which designates Deputy Treasurer Danielle Palmerville as an authorized official to perform all of the duties involved with depositing or investing public funds.
Second.
Motion in support, please call the row.
Councilmember Cobbmanese?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Item D, adoption of resolution number 23-1964, adding Deputy Treasurer as authorized check signer.
Madam Mayor, I'd also like to make a motion to adopt a resolution 23-1964, adding Danielle Palmerville's signature as Deputy Treasurer effective August 1st, 2023, to our current and future city financial institutions.
Second.
Motion in support, please call the row.
Councilmember Cobbmanese?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Item E, adoption of resolution number 23-1965, local governing body resolution for charitable gaming license, council.
Madam Mayor, I'm excited about asking the council to adopt this resolution number 23-1965, recognizing Lift Up A Child as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of the qualifications, application for a charitable gaming license with a state of mission Gaming Control Board.
Second.
Motion, motion in second, any discussion? Saying none, please call the row.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobbmanese?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Item F, approval of a special event application for the community Back to School Wellness Fair, council.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special event application for the community Back to School Wellness Fair held by the Macomb Alumni Chapter Delta Sigma Theta Sorority at Love Life Family Christian Center located at 17363 Topher on Saturday, August 26th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. with the submittal of a simple site plan and that all vendors obtain the appropriate permits or licenses.
Second that.
Motion in support, please call the row.
Councilmember Cobbmanese?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
We usually do it, it depends, it's up and down, but I, I hate to have guests and not recognize them, those that are part of this community, Back to School, the Delta's correct. Would y'all like to come up and say, you know, how did you start? I know you all just started in Macomb County, it was probably almost two years ago now, and just want to introduce yourself to the community that you are serving. And we want to say thank you in advance.
Good evening, Mayor and council, and those in the general audience. My name is Janice L. Willis, and I stand before you as the president of the Macomb Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. As Mayor Owens stated, we were chartered in the Macomb County in May of 2020, during a time during the pandemic where things were a little uncertain. But as an organization of college-educated women who are committed to public service with a primary focus on the Black community, we wanted to make sure that we show our visibility in East Point. East Point is one of the 12 cities where we provide service. We are all about sisterhood, scholarship, service and social action. This event here in East Point will allow us to prepare our children for school with essential things for backpacks and different school supplies, have some fun. And then it's not just for the children, it's for the parents as well. So we'll have things there for the mental capacity, right? We're talking about physical and mental health. So from a physical aspect, they'll receive trinkets from us. But from a mental perspective, we will have Macomb County Health Department out there. We'll have stations where people can learn more about their numbers. What are your numbers? What are some of the preventative measures? We'll have mobile dentistry out there, haircuts, you name it. And so we really want to make an impact here. And East Point is the city that we were led to come to, to provide that particular service. There's a lot going on in the city, there's a lot that has been done at that particular church, and we just want to continue to keep that torch going and keep it lit by depositing here. So it's not our first stop and it's definitely not our last. So we thank you so much for approving us the opportunity to serve here, and we'll continue to be here, and we're here to serve. Thank you so much.
Amen.
Mayor, if I could follow up with one quick thing?
Yes.
Well, thank you for coming out here. It's great to see your sorority out here doing things after college and still keeping in touch. I'm in fraternity, just one letter off from you guys, Delta Sigma Phi. So great to see you doing things out in the community. Thanks for everything you do in East Point, and that is all I had, Mayor.
Anybody else like to say anything to this wonderful group?
I just want to say thank you. I echo the sentiments. Thank you for what you are bringing to the East Point community. Thank you for choosing this to be the place that you spotlight. I don't think you'll be disappointed, so thank you very much.
Yes, again, I just didn't want you to come out and we don't acknowledge you. I believe in acknowledging people who do the work, and you have been doing the work a long time before you came to East Point. I'm just glad that you chose East Point to add to your portfolio to do the work in. So I really thank you all. You all have been really helpful in, you know, my term as well and helping me do some things to, not your chapter as, as part of Macomb, but the Delta's period. I think I know one of the main chapter presidents in Detroit, so who oversees Detroit, you know, and she has, you know, so you're all connected. So you all do a good job, so thank you for the work and thank you for choosing East Point. Next is the approval of attendance. Do you all want to do this all together to approve?
Let's, let's do it separately.
Okay. Item G, the.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Mayor.
We didn't approve the special event yet.
Oh, we just was, all happy and excited, okay. Please, oh yeah. Motion in support, call the row, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cobbmanese?
Yes. Yes.
Counselmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Counselmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Counselmember Baker?
Yes.
Okay, item G, approval, thank you, approval of attendance for Councilman Baker for the 2023 MML Convention for October 18th through the 20th, 2023, counsel.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the attendance of Mayor Protem Rob Baker for the 2023 MML Convention, October 18th through the 20th, 2023.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Counselmember Codmanese?
Yes.
Counselmember Curly?
Yes.
Counselmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Counselmember Baker?
Yes.
Approval of, item H, approval of attendance for Councilman Curly, 2023 MML Convention for October 18th through the 20th, 2023, counsel.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I might, I want to talk a little bit about this for myself. First of all, obviously, we all know that there's a general election that's coming in November. I am up for reelection. The conference is October 18th through the 20th, which is about two weeks or so from, from the election. I don't know if I'm going to get reelected or not. But I have a problem of me going to a convention two weeks before the election. So let's take a couple hypo, hypotho, take a couple examples. Let's say that I don't win the reelection, but I went to that convention and I spent, what is it, five or $6,000? The convention.
I hope not, it's probably 500.
595 for the registration and then there's lodging.
Then there's, okay, then there's, and we don't know how much that is, and then meals. Anyway, it's a taxpayer's money and that's what I'm concerned about. Now, if I went to the convention and won, that's fine. I'm not sure I want to take the chance on spending taxpayers' money on a convention and then losing the election and those two or three days are wasted, as is the money. So I would, I'm glad that Councilman Baker and Councilman DeMonico have been approved to go, but I would just say to you, City Manager, that I want my, my name removed, that I will not be going to the convention for the reasons I stated, the taxpayers' money.
Okay, moving right along. Item I, approval of attendance for Councilmember Codmanese for the 2023 MML Convention, October 18th through the 20th, 2023. Are you going, Mr.?
So I would move that we approve the attendance of Councilmember Codmanese for the 2023 MML Convention for the days of October 18th through the 20th, 2023.
Second that.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Counselmember Baker?
Yes.
Counselmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Counselmember Codmanese?
Abstain, since I personally benefited from going.
Counselmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item J, the youth mayor mentorship proposal, and then we are done. So I put this on the, on the agenda because I know we are bringing back our youth. I believe our Councilmember Codmanese brung back the, rung back the wheel, actually not inventing the wheel. We are just bringing it back for the teens commission that we have. And I, I believe that we were, we did some shadowing as well in the past and I don't know as much as about the shadowing as some of you are. Well, Councilwoman Curly and Councilwoman DeMonico may know more about that and also our city attorney about how the shadowing went. And could you explain a little bit of that and how that went? So I could have a better discussion on where I'm going with this.
Okay. Well, yeah, I guess back in 2006, I believe it was, maybe it was 2005, I shadowed the city council. As Mayor Dave Austin was here, I was shadowing him and some of my other colleagues in high school there. We're shadowing everyone else on the city council at the time. And I know we've done it a time or two since I've been on city council and then kind of COVID hit and we kind of, of course, stopped for a while and haven't kicked it back up. But that's probably all I could give you off the top of my head.
Now, what did that consist of when you shadowed them? Did you go with the mayor and the council? How did that go? Did they show you parts of the city? Did they teach you Robert's rules of sturges? How did that shadowing go? What did you learn from it?
Um, I remember there was some meeting ahead of time and I think Mayor Austin didn't make it to that one. But then we shadowed also at, I don't remember what was discussed at that, frankly. And then we shadowed at City Hall. It wasn't this city hall right here, it was before this was built. But we kind of, I think, just like kind of sat behind the current council and just listened, kind of like we did a few years back before COVID hit and had some of the high school students here.
Ma'am, do you remember any of the shadowing?
Yeah, I'm smiling and laughing because my shadowing was 24, 25 years ago. But we did pretty much the same, same thing as Councilman DeMonico was talking about. We had, we had a young, young person from school for each councilperson and for the mayor and for the city manager and finance director and chief of police. But yeah, so they hung around with us all day and we took them all to all of the buildings. It was fun, but it was only just the one, one day that we did that. Is that what you're thinking about, one day?
Yeah, well, not one day. Well, I've been working with a young lady, she's also a student at the high school. She's in the audience right now, wave your hand, I just don't care, there you go. And she's been shadowing me and I know it's something that we want to bring back. I don't know if you all are talking to students that want to shadow you all, too. But, you know, having her before, I had her up here, I wanted to see how it went first and have her up here to shadow me as well, just to be a part of council meetings and things like that. She's been, actually, we've been going to different buildings in this, in our community. We went to one meeting for the S E M S D as well to see how the waters run and how we clean the water. She has done a lot of community events. We've been working on how to vote and how sturges is ran and things like that. So I didn't just want to have a student up here without letting council know and getting approval from council to try to bring that back. And how did y'all feel about that?
I guess I got one question, it's just a general. How did you guys go about determining, like, who shadowed? Or like, did you just reach out to the schools? Because that was obviously before my time, but I'm just curious.
Well, I was just, I just remembered after the quick little intro I gave. But when I was at the high school, it was the National Honor Society officers that were invited. I was president of the National Honor Society my senior year and then it was some of the student council representatives that were invited. I don't know exactly, I'm sure that went through, like it'd be Ms. Van Herens right now. I don't know how they went about that. And then I guess that last time we did it, I must not have been part of the invite process. I don't remember. I know some students came out, but I don't remember how we selected them.
I was just curious because I, I guess, you know, maybe that would give me some understanding of how, how we do that, if, if we do this going forward. So that's all.
I have a, I have a question for Mr. Albright. From a legal standpoint, with respect to the charter and ordinance, how does it work for a student to participate, actively participate on the dais in a council meeting?
I think that it would be permissible as long as the city council and his agreement would pass in a resolution to allow that, it's been done in the past. I know when, there were two students that shadowed me throughout the day. They met me at court in Mount Clemens. They watched it, I don't recall whether it was a motion hearing or whether it was a status conference. But I recall taking them and back to the judge's chambers and introducing them to the judge and introducing them to the, to the judicial staff. They then came back to my office and I just made sure that all of my clients consented to them sitting in on either telephone conferences or meetings, and everyone did. I introduced them to the other attorneys in our office and our support staff. We went to lunch together and I think overall it was a very positive experience for them.
And were they able to sit with you at the table as you were representing your clients in court?
I don't think that they actually came up to me to the podium. I think they were just in the courtroom, in the general seating area. And then I just, I let the judge know that there were two students here shadowing me today and judges love that stuff. So they were, you know, encouraged to meet them. And like I said, we went back in the chambers and the judges answered questions that they had. So I believe these two, these two students were planning on going to law school in the future.
And then I guess I have a question for you, Mayor. Would you be looking to just pull students independently? Or would you want to pull students that are a part of the Teen Advisory Commission? Once we have that commission seated, what's kind of the thought process of where the students would generate from?
I think a little bit of both. Well, this young lady, since it's something that we just brung back the teen advisory closer to the, the end of the school year and she's been very active in the community and she's been showing interest. So, so probably a little bit of both. There's someone say, I want to shadow the mayor and it's from, I don't want to limit them just from the teen advisory board because we only have only so many spots there. So if someone from the community say, Mayor Owens, I want to shadow you. I've had, I had students from, from Michigan State to U of M that asked to shadow me. So I have no limits to people that want to learn about local government and be the next leaders of tomorrow. So I think a little bit of both. So she just showed interest. I think she's one of the youngest that I've seen. We have a lot of young people that came to the podium with, you know, their parents and things like that. But she's the only one I've actually seen that actually, of course, as your children did, too, that came up and spoke on behalf of other people's rights and stuff like that and has been in the community and has done and showed interest in local government. And so I think we are, not just the mayor, but all of council should have someone shadowing them to, to know what we, we all do. I can't do all that by myself, so someone that shadows Councilman Curly and the city manager and things like that, someone else, you know, all of us, just to see how, because everybody does things differently and has, you know, different role. Well, we all have the same role, but we all do things differently in a certain capacity. So like I'm more in a community engagement, more with the children. So it's certain things that I do that I take, that's my heart and that I have more of a passion for, that you might not have as a passion for, but a passion for, but not as strong as me. So everybody, each child learns something different. So I think all of us should have someone shadowing them as well. So the whole idea is, is a mayor and council program, shadowing mentorship, mentorship program. It's an incredible idea for both the city and its youth. It offers numerous benefits. Firstly, it provides the youth with a parallel opportunity to learn from experienced leaders like ourselves, gaining valuable insights into local government, leadership, and decision-making. By being mentored by the mayor and council, young individuals can understand the challenges and complexities of governing a city, inspiring them to become future leaders themselves. Moreover, this program fosters a sense of connection and engagement among the youth, instilling in them a sense of pride and ownership in their city. By interacting with the mayor and council and all of elected leaders and also leaders of this community, they can invoke their concerns, ideas, and aspirations, creating a platform for meaningful dialogue and collaboration. Ultimately, this program empowers the youth, equipping them with the skills and knowledge needed to actively contribute, to contribute, sorry, to their community's growth and development. So I'm asking council to either do a resolution or have Mr. Albright put a resolution together so we can bring back the shadowing and bring the kids up here. I don't think they'll be running the meeting, but they'd be a part of, I think, something with Councilman DeMonico was saying and Councilman Curly was saying, I thought you all said that, were up here. They wasn't running the meeting, but they were a part of it. Councilman Curly?
Yeah, two questions. Number one, how long do you anticipate this to last? And the second question, how do we select the person that's going to shadow us?
Whoever shows interest in shadowing, what we got from the school?
How do we, we write a letter to the students? Are we go and talk to the students at their class? Or what, what are you suggesting that would be an effective way to contact somebody?
That's a good question. Well, we already started a teen advisory board within the city and we already have a partnership with our superintendent and she, she knows about what we're trying to do here at the city to partner with, with the school. But the kids have to show interest in that. And also, I have, I think one reason Amelia Ritter, who's also interested in shadowing me, I have went to go visit the school. So when they see their leaders coming to the school, that is probably why she showed interest. She never even knew, she heard of me, but never knew actually who I was until I came into school. So what you just said is a good idea, going to visit the schools to let our children see our councilman, see you, Councilman Curly. And I'm like, oh, I've never met my councilman, what do you do? And then they're going to show interest and come up to you and ask you, can we shadow you? So our kids do need to see us in the school, seeing us active, to know exactly who we are, what we do, and how to do those things. So like you said, connecting with the schools.
And the time limit on this is, what are you talking about, Amy?
I don't know if it's a time limit. I mean, it's just ongoing mentorship. I mean, mentorship doesn't have a limit on it. It depends on what your capacity of, you know, mentorship is. I mean, I don't mentor her every, I don't be with her every single day, but some days out the week, we take time and I, you know, help her and about questions that she might have about leadership and governing, where I take her places in the community. So there's not a, a limited capacity. It's up to you and how you want to schedule, you know, showing or mentoring that individual.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, maybe once school's back in session here, it'll be, you know, pretty soon. I hate saying that because that means the summer's coming to a close. But I did also just find while we were talking, the last time we did shadowing was May 16th, 2017. And it looks like what we did here is we had five students. Mayor Pixley's shadow was Alan McCovas. Mayor Protem Kleinfeldt was Nyla Intravia. My shadow was Timothy Avery. Councilwoman Lucidos was Stacy Williams and Councilman Marion's was Julian Warren. And it looks like I see up here a little higher, the, the mayor's shadow read the National Police Week proclamation. So, you know, could do things like that. And then I see there was, we put a mock discussion at the end of the agenda. I didn't scroll down to see what that was here. Oh, I think, yeah, here it is, a corridor improvement lighting study. We talked about a lighting study on Grashit Avenue, it looks like. And I think that's when we swapped seats and then they took the mics and made up their own discussion points and talked about it here. But if you look up the minutes again from May 16th, 2017, there's a good amount of detail here. And actually, I'm sure the YouTube video is still on our channel, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Going by what Councilman Curly's saying.
We did, yeah, we did the same thing. We had a fake city court, or city hall and, and the courthouse as well. We had somebody as a judge and then when we did the council, we had someone pretend like they were the mayor and then the council people and we would get up at the hearing of the public and challenge it with crazy questions, but it was fun because they, they had to answer that, right? So, yeah. Amelia, right? Amelia, would you do me a favor, since you, since you're already part of the?
Good evening.
Well, question number one, you're going to high school.
Yes.
What, what grade are you in?
I'm going to the ninth grade. I'm going to be a freshman as of this year.
Oh, okay. Well, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, I am Amelia Ritter. I go to East Point High School. I am a East Point resident. One of the things that I like to picture myself as is a student, but also a public speaker. I do a lot of public speaking in different places and like Mayor Owens said, I am a part of the community a lot and I do stand for what I believe in. What else would you like to know?
Well, I can tell already that, how do I put this? Oh, you don't take any guffaw of anybody.
I don't.
Good for you. Good for you. It was nice to meet you and a little bit about you and, how long have you lived in East Point?
Um, I have lived in East Point since I was born.
Ooh.
Mom has been a resident. Mom has been a resident for 45 years.
Forty-five?
Forty-five.
Back when it was East Detroit?
Back when it was East Detroit.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else want to ask a question while I've got her up there? Thank you.
No problem.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I do have another question for clarification on timing, because I think Councilman Crowley addressed this, but I don't think we got a clear understanding of what is it, what it is that we're going for. Because it sounds like you're talking about a more ongoing mentoring relationship. What has been described by Councilman DeMonaco from 2017, and described by Councilman Crowley, is more of a day of shadowing of your public officials. So what are you proposing? Are you proposing ongoing mentoring, or are you proposing a shadowing day for the city of East Point?
Probably a shadowing day for the city of East Point, but the children would be shadowing us beyond that, because to be up here and don't even know what you're talking about, or we're not mentoring them before they get up here and preparing them, I wouldn't want them up here. So we can do, like you said, some type of time slot, of course, probably a month or two, just getting them understanding Sturgis and how meetings are ran. So even when they have the mock interview, I mean, not the mock interview, but the mock council meeting, that they're prepared, so they're knowledgeable about the issues that's at hand, number one, and they're prepared to run a meeting. So you can't get all that in one day, you know? I can't, she can't shadow me on one day. I don't have the time to show her everything that I do. I don't think the city manager can have somebody work with her, or nobody in here can have someone work with them one day, and they can know everything that they do. So sometimes it takes a lot of time. It depends on, you just probably have to put that language together, or council has to, like I said, I'm not inventing that Council DeMonaco, I don't know how that was ran, as far as how many weeks you all did that. How did you all, well, you said, you got selected because you was in National Society. But how long was that program for you? And how did that work? And then we also can do something depending upon your time schedule in the summer, because it is summertime, and me and her have been working together. So that is pretty much my, I was more flexible in the summer, because my kids are out of school too. So when my kids are going through school, I might, can't be as flexible as I am today. So that'll be, have to be something that all the council have to be a part of.
Well, just to follow up before Councilman DeMonaco comments, I'm just wondering if the best facilitation of that, because everything that you're saying sounds much like the goals of the Teen Advisory Commission ordinance. And I'm wondering if, since we're talking about having a preparatory period to prepare the children, and getting them to understand community engagement, engagement in civic affairs, engagement as elected officials, if it would be better for us to facilitate that through the Teen Advisory Commission, and then conclude the end of the year with the Teen Advisory Commission with a shadow day. So all throughout the year, we as a council body, you know, you're submitting ideas to whoever is running the Teen Advisory Commission, or working with them, because they're going to be running it. And then all of their goals are to work towards getting to the end of the school year when they have that shadow day. I'm just, because rather than, as you've stated, reinvent the wheel, maybe work within the confines of what we've already established and created.
That sounds good. Maybe like you said, the Teen Advisory, maybe closer to closing the other summer end of school, maybe we can do a mock, you know, council meeting, closing off the school year, or something like that, of what they learned.
Or even find ways to have them participate that would not be in violation of the charter and ordinance, and we would have more time to prepare and get that clarity from both our legal counsel and administration of what things would not be a violation of Overmeetings Act or the Parliamentary Procedure.
Right. Because I think, I think we had asked our attorney that already, and he says permissible. So I think we got around that already.
I don't think we did completely based off of what Mr. DeMonaco shared. Even when they did it, it's limited. The scope is limited in terms of what the young people can do, because they are not the elected officials we are.
Right. No, we don't want them to vote, of course, because they're not elected. But, you know, like, for instance, at our next meeting, I would like Ms. Ritter to sit up here and be a part of, you know, the council meeting. She doesn't have to vote. She doesn't have to do anything like that. But sometimes kids, it's just something about being a part of, you know, being a part of something. Sitting out there, yeah, you're still a part of the discussion and things like that. But sitting up here for a young person means a lot. So, you know, and...
Which is where that teen commission would allow them to not only do it in this format, but in their own public meeting. They're going to be the ones seated up here on the dais, running the meeting. So, yeah, I think that goes to your point.
Yeah. So we're talking about the same thing, pretty much. So no need to go. But, yeah, so if Mr. Albright, I don't know what council is thinking, since we already have the Teen Advisory Board. So this is just a discussion I was thinking about. Also, the shadowing, just bringing it together with the Teen Advisory Board, and then, you know, having the children do a mock council meeting. I think that'd be awesome. And Mr. Albright putting that language together. I don't know where, since it's already been put together, I don't know where you will find that already, since it was last done in May 2017. I had just got elected right after that, November. So I had no, no knowledge of how that was ran. Maybe Councilman DeMonaco and Councilman Crowley can help you with that. Well, you were here. You were attorney here.
I have to look back in the archives to see exactly how it was all put together. But as I indicated earlier, yeah, a resolution could be put together to allow the mentorship to take place. Certainly, council members can't delegate their authority to make second motions on official city business, nor vote. That, I think, would run afoul of both the city charter and state law. But sitting up here, perhaps doing, you know, mock procedures, there's certainly nothing wrong with that. And I think that would be something that would be educational for the students.
Do we need to do anything today to push that forward?
I personally don't think nothing or anything has to be done today. I think there's a general idea of what council wants to do moving ahead. So I don't think anything official needs to be done today.
I want to ask council, because school is starting, and I have been working with Ritter. She has been coming. If we have our next meeting, she might not be a part of the conversation, but do you all mind if she sits up here with us? How would you all feel about that?
Well, do you like chocolate? You got my yes, though, as long as you bring me a Kit Kat or something. Yes, that's not a problem. That's how we did the mock thing.
We already did that. How about, how you feel about that?
I was just going to say, I think if we do do it, we should probably have at least like five. And I think I was looking back, we did have like Mr. Blum, and, you know, Ms. Walt, and Mr. Albright had shadows also. Probably more than one, because then they can have a discussion at the end altogether, you know? So I think if we do it, we probably should have at least like five students, I would think, so.
We don't have five students yet, but I know she want to do it really bad. So it's just something we doing for a student that has shown interest in it. So I'm saying, yes, Councilman Crowley said, yes. But I understand what you're saying, until we get it up and running. So I don't know how the rest of council feels about her being a part of the meeting, our next meeting, just sitting up here with all of us, and being a part of the process, and not saying anything if she can hold all that in. What do you feel, Councilman Baker?
Yeah, I was actually kind of leaning towards like the same sentiment that Councilman DeMonaco had said. And it's not that we don't want her to be able to do it, per se, but I think to make it fair, or give her the full experience of having a body up here, I think that would be good. And then any other teens that may be interested, they also have an opportunity. And in that way, everybody comes together kind of at the same time. So that way, at least it looks like we give everybody the same amount of time to do it, and just a fair shot of it. But that's about it. You know, I do have to shout her out, because she did give me my agenda today. But, I mean, that's really all it is, just to make sure it's balanced, and that everybody has the same opportunity as anyone else.
Yeah. I think everybody has the same opportunity. This is something that's came about, and she showed interest in, this is something she's been wanting to do for a while. So, but, yeah, I think we have shown, everybody gets the same opportunity, because it was five kids. I probably would do the same thing for them. So, but like I said, it's up to council and what you all want to do. So I think we heard from everybody except you, Councilwoman.
I think I agree with the sentiments of Councilman Baker and Councilman DeMonaco. While, on a personal level, I, you know, I absolutely love Amelia's engagement, and all of our young people's engagement, all of them that show up to these meetings on a regular basis. That being said, I think I'd like to see it done in a way that gives equal opportunity to multiple students at the same time. And I think it would be a much more enriching experience for all of the students, even to have, as Mr. DeMonaco said, that opportunity at the end, to be able to talk about the experience and what they've gained from it, what they've learned. And then I think even for the other members of council, as well as our department, our administration leaders, for them to be able to show the difference between what they're doing versus what we do, I just think it would be a much more enriching experience for all the way around, if we wait.
Well, thank you all for your statements. But, Ms. Amelia, thank you. We've been working, we've been doing a lot of work together, and I'm very proud of you. And it always takes someone, we haven't did this in almost six years, for you to have us come back and want to bring it back, say thank you for doing that. So it always takes one to start the process, and start the movement, and start the change, and you're doing that. So thank you. And thank you, council, as well. And I can't wait to see the teen commission, teen advisory board come back as well. And so, moving right along to payroll and bills, council?
Madam Mayor, I would move to pay them bills in an amount of $2,209,658.90.
Support.
Motion to support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabminis?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Next item is the hearing of the public. This is the second hearing of the public. You get the same time as you did in the beginning. Anyone want to like to speak at this time?
Good evening. I would just like to say thank you to Mayor Owens. I actually had a lot of things wrote down, but we just gonna skip past that and just have like a little one-on-one conversation. I would just like to say thank you for everything she has done. It's been a really good experience. It's been a great experience working with the mayor, and going to the chapitaine, and going to different meetings about the water. It's been very great. It's been a great opportunity to work with the mayor for not even, not even what, a month? Hasn't even been a month. It's been, what, five, not even five weeks? Five weeks yet, almost a month. It's been a very great opportunity. And I would just like to say thank you presently to Mayor Owens. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'd like to follow up on what Mr. Kern said. Unfortunately, he left, so he cannot answer my questions. And Councilman DeMonaco, you brought a lot of good points about safety and green space. I would like to ask how it becomes more safe when someone has to cross Nine Mile to come to visit the t-shirt shop, or my business, and/or parking around the corner in the winter when half the people, I shovel my sidewalk. Angela can attest to that, that our sidewalks are shoveled, but the sidewalks around the corners aren't shoveled. And how is that more safe? And I want to see more green space, okay? I have no problem with more green space. I have 25 feet in front of my building that's at easement. In 25 feet, you cannot accommodate a nine-foot parallel parking space? I'm not asking for new parking spaces. I'm asking to retain some of the parking spaces. Wouldn't it make more sense that someone could parallel park as they do on Grasshut Avenue? Is this unsafe on Grasshut? We used, I go to the UPS store on Grasshut all the time. I park in front of the building. I run in, go to the UPS store and leave. If I had a UPS store down Nine Mile, where are they gonna, they can't run in and leave and drop their package off? That doesn't make any sense. I want to, you know, I'm looking at it, there's 25 feet. You need five feet for a sidewalk. That leaves 20 feet. Mr. Kern said he needs nine feet for a parallel parking space. That leaves 11 feet. That's 11 feet of green space. Now, I know you're going to say, well, there's a curb, and there's other things. Okay, so it's not 11, it's eight. That's eight feet more than there are there presently. There should be no reason why parallel parking cannot be accommodated. Why does the, in front of the VFW hall, and there's a new shop that just opened there on the corner, why should they have to lose their parking space in front? I understand your concerns about backing into the space, and thank God, there's never been an incident that I know of in front of, and I've been there since 1989. There have been a lot of incidents where people are making left turns onto Nine Mile from the side streets, but not backing out of my parking spaces. And, you know, I'm there, there's somebody always there. This needs to be really thought about, because you're really not making it safer for the citizens that use the shops and services in East Point. And in the grand scheme of things, is it going to hurt to put in parking spaces on, what do I have? I don't even know. 150 feet of frontage, and down the street, another 150 feet of frontage, and when you go on down farther where there, you know, all the spaces that already have parking.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else would like to speak at this time?
So, hi. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, for hearing us on City Council. I know we were, we were here last city council meeting, and my wife and I prepared a really great statement regarding parking in front of our building. The main thing about the parking is it's going to, it's going to really damage us financially and business-wise if that parking goes away. And I'm just, I've asked, I would like to ask you guys, the city council, to come out and look at the area out in front. I have, I have 8.2 inch, 8 feet, .2 inches of sidewalk between my building and the curb. And according to the Michigan MDOT regulations, we have enough room for parallel parking. Everything can be set back, so that, so that we meet MDOT's requirements, and it's safe parking. I just ask, I would really just like to have somebody help get involved in this. I'm asking you as city council to come out, take a look at it with me, bring Ryan Kern out, and show him the measurements of it. So this, it's really, it's really going to kill my business. Going to kill my business. I have two spots behind, and I have, I have businesses on either side of me that are going to be affected by this also. And this is a great business area. The buildings are all great areas for businesses. And we don't have a car repair shop. It's not a car repair shop. It's not a collision shop. It's business buildings, where somebody could come in and open a coffee shop, a juicery, a distillery. That sounds good, too, but, doesn't it? About now? So, anyway, I wish, wish I could just try to get somebody to help us and determine if the city council can say, this guy's got enough room, or let's give this guy a foot, you know? I mean, I think as the city council, you guys have the ability to do that, in order to help maintain business in East Point. That's what we all want. So thank you for listening to me.
Yes, sir. We have, can you give the name? I don't know if Ms. Homie knows the, okay. We know where, what business you are. Yeah, we have that discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much for hearing me.
I didn't know if you wanted to say out loud what was the name of your business, so if she has it already, it's up to you.
She does.
She has it, okay, okay. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, in the front, I know you were about to get up, if you all still don't want to, it's up to you.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Haven't been here in a few weeks, but I have been watching everything that's going on in TV. I'm concerned citizens trying to address the council, to taking the consideration about the, I've discussed that with um councilmen about the total experience that's going up on Grasshut. I watched the zoning board had a meeting on how the residents felt about the building being occupied and what it would be used for. Pictures were given to the board about changes that would be made. Representatives stated it would be used for baby showers, lunches, dinners, entertainment. The conversation was misleading, misleading even to the occupancy, time of operating, and the actual functions of the hall. Pool tables and TVs on the wall were included on the changes. I live in the neighborhood, it's gonna change the neighborhood with traffic coming in and out of the area. Now, there's been other re- citizens who voiced their opposition on about the how the hall would be utilized. They also told of the previous years that the hall, that there was a lot of trouble. That would be a difference in between the building being down the street where it originally was on Gr- Grasshut and Tofer to be relocated up on Ten Mile and Grasshut. Constant complaints about the police DM dispatch to the previous hall, which were documented by the police. It had been looking for disaster waiting to happen for people coming into the city just to party. Benefit for East Point Hall, where's the safety for the seniors? Thank you.
What, excuse me, what building, what?
The old East Point Manor.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that. I know you said a hall, but it's a couple halls in the city of East Point. Oh, okay, no, you gotta talk there. No, not you, but if you wanna speak, we gotta speak there. Um, anyone else would like to speak at this time? Any concerns or anything like that? Okay, seeing none. Second hearing of the public is now closed. Thank you for everyone that was a part of that. Uh, we go into mayor council report, starting with our councilwoman, um Kamunice.
Um, first I just wanna say to the business owners who took the time to come to our council meeting tonight, I am really excited to see you all here, especially those that this is not your first meeting. Um, seeing that East Point is a community um of small businesses, it's really good to see our business owners engaged in what's happening in our government process. So, I hope this is not the last time we see you. I hope um you will make this a, a regular part of your schedule, um, 'cause we need to hear from you, we need to hear your voices, we need your engagement. I also want to um extend my sincere condolences again to um the family of Judy Fatise and uh to her husband, to the East Point, I mean, the East Detroit Bakery uh family. Um, she recently passed away and um it was a big impact to the staff there at East Detroit Bakery. So, um, to her husband and her family, as well as her extended family, you have um my sincere condolences on behalf of both myself and council. Um, on a lighter note, uh, those of you who have um not been able yet to attend one of our, a part of our summer concert series, please make sure you take a look at the city's website and schedule those into your calendar. We have a couple more um that are coming up and our economic development manager and others have been working hard um to put that series together. So, um, hopefully you will be able to uh make it out to that. I know I am past due for making it to one and I love music and every time I have had another obligation, but um it's a fun night um here in East Point. Also, the East Point Roseville Chamber is taking nominations for their Salute of Excellence Awards. So, if you know someone and they said East Point um has not been submitting, so East Point submit, there's lots of categories to submit, go to the um Chamber's webpage and you can get more information about that. Also, um, we talked a lot tonight about um investing in our teens and investing time in our young people. And so I wanna encourage our young people, you have an opportunity for, uh, to be poured into, um, from not only members of this body, but um city administration at large. And so I wanna encourage you to apply for the Teen Advisory Commission to our young people. If you feel like your schedule is too busy, but you know someone or parents, you know a young person, don't just complain that they have nothing to do. We are creating opportunities for them and as you've already seen um with the discussion tonight, we want to engage with our young people, we want to pour into them. So I wanna encourage teens and parents alike, um, go on the city's website and apply. Our um community uh, I'm about to get rid of the wrong name, Community Engagement Manager has been phenomenal in her short time here with the city and she has created lots of content, um, and is constantly putting out those uh social media and email blasts, so uh please engage. Also, um, I wanna encourage everybody, no matter how you vote, exercise your right to vote. There are people who fought to make sure that you have that right to vote. Exercise your right to vote because every vote absolutely does count. And um finally, we talked a lot tonight about uh giving of our time and of ourselves and I heard a quote this week that really just stayed with me. I actually read uh this quote um as a part of a, a book that I'm reading and it's by um an author, Priscilla Shire, and she basically said, "The greatest gift that, outside of love, that everyone can give someone is the gift of your own time. It's one of the few gifts that can never be returned or retracted. It's your gift, your blessing. Give it to whomever you can." And then from my favorite author, um, "Since our days are determined by him, the number of our months is in his control. He has made limits that we cannot pass. And so since we know we have a limited amount of time um in our dash here on earth, let's make the most of it and give of our time to others." Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Curly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, tonight, I know we have people come up that have problems with uh what's gonna happen on Nine Mile Road, but we also had two different people that, that we approved their request. And they're about taking care of kids, aren't they? And that's what we're about. That's what make us really happy when we leave this building tonight. We're concerned about their, people's concerns on Nine Mile Road, but we're also very proud and very happy of the people who have enough faith in, in East Point to open up a stop this much to take care of kids. And real quickly, uh, Madam Mayor, I, I would just ask you folks to be aware of our fire department and our police department. The only time you hear about something that's really bad, you read it in a newspaper, but they're out there every day. They take care of serious problems that could be very dangerous to them every day that you're not gonna hear about. But they do their job and we take it for granted. And that's, we don't wanna do that, do we? We don't take the police and fire for granted. You know, say a little prayer for them tonight, that they would be protected and they'll take care of themselves and that uh the good Lord will take care of all of our people that go out there and put their life on the line every day. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, um, DeMonaco.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, first off, condolences to Judy Fatise's family. Uh, if you've been to East Detroit Bakery, I'm sure you've met her and uh she'll be missed uh greatly for sure, so everyone keep her uh family in your thoughts. Um, and yeah, thank you to everyone coming out and um talking about Nine Mile. Um, hopefully we can uh figure all this out. I'm, I'm hoping certainly that we can. And like to thank Senator Kleinfelt and Representative Edwards again for them pushing for us to get uh ten million dollars in funding to replace those twenty-two-hundred-and-sixty-four lead lines that our city manager talked about earlier. Um, we're uh working fast, three a day once in a while uh to get those done. It, it will take some time, but uh we'll make sure we get every last one of them in the upcoming years. Um, and also, um, I don't know, I felt, I think we, I think everybody clapped last meeting, I, I missed the last meeting when we talked about the ten million, but nobody clapped about six million dollars in funding for the pension. I think uh, uh, the state, the state is uh investing sixteen million dollars in one year to our city. That's um, have you ever heard of that, Mr. Blum?
We're lucky we get our revenue share.
Yeah, so this is, this is big, uh, this is huge that um, if you know anything about the pension, it certainly doesn't cover the full amount uh that we need to put into it, but it will certainly make a huge, huge dent. And I just uh thank your uh leaders of our great state if you get a chance to. Um, and then also, yeah, just as everyone else has said, um, make sure that you vote in this upcoming election. Our clerk, uh Robin Underwood's been working very, very hard with the whole clerk's office and uh getting everything together. Um, and like uh Ms. Walton said, eight to four, right, it was eight to four, this Saturday. You can come to city hall and vote if you'd rather do that than voting on Election Day. You know, if you work on Tuesday, come out on Saturday, vote absentee any day, just make sure you do. We've got the mayoral primary and a bond proposal for East Point Community Schools. Uh, so thank you, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Mayor Proton, Baker?
Thank you. Um, yes, to our business owners, um, you guys have not been forgotten, conversations are being had to try to get understanding um of what's what. So, um, we appreciate you guys coming out, sharing your thoughts and your concerns, whatever information that you have. So I just wanted you to know that, you know, and I know I talked with you guys after the last council meeting. Um, and so, yeah, you, you have, we have not forgot about you and, um, you know, I understand some concerns. Um, but we wanna be sure that, uh, what we want, a solution that's, that's good for everyone, if that's attainable. Um, but, you know, we understand sometimes things happen that are beyond our control, you know, there are some things that are necessary, you know, the road does need to be repaired. Uh, we understand the parking situation is a concern for your business, so we don't want you to feel that we don't hear you when you share, when you share those concerns with us. Um, so I, I just wanted to thank you again for coming out and um continue to let us know what your concerns are. You know, and uh we, we will listen to you and we will try to find whatever answers we can. Um, and one thing, our obligation is to always be honest with you too, with, with whatever we learn. I would echo the same condolences to uh Judy, uh, I don't wanna say the last name wrong, Fatise. Um, I've met her uh several years ago and uh definitely uh sad to hear of her passing. Um, so condolences to her family, to her work family as well, and to, to anyone who knew her. She was a lively spirit, she was just, just a ray of sunshine, so, um, at least that was my experience with her. Also to uh Amelia, um, continue to stay involved. That is a beautiful thing. The, the one thing that you have uh is youth and that youth energy is uh, if they could bottle it and sell it, you know, we'd, we'd, we'd all be millionaires, but um, you know, learn what you can, um, and try to be effective, um, you know, as a resident, you know, just a good citizen of the world. And uh, yeah, it is just, it's a beautiful thing to see. So with that, um, you know, we always have a word of the day, but it's a simple one today, it's home. Let's go there.
Thank you, thank you, everyone that came out. Thank you to all the businesses that came out and uh, and thank you for letting us know when we do these projects, you don't see mayor and council going out with a measuring and seeing how many uh feet from your um, your building to the street is to make sure that you get enough parking. We have people that we trust who are engineers to do those things, so when we don't, so when those things aren't happening for you, um, let, please let us know because we don't know everything that's going on. I'm not an engineer, I'm not um doing certain things that um, that we pay contractors and big-time people to do. We just entrust them that they're gonna do the things that we need them to do and some of those things might not, you might not agree with and you have to let us know those things like you're doing and we're gonna do, find um the best solution to help you all uh um continue business as, you know, as usual, as much as I can, as much as council can. That is our job and um we're doing the best that we can. Um, we don't know everything that goes on because we have people that we entrust to do those things. We have our city manager, we have an attorney, so every uh case or everything that goes through, um, and everything that goes through the police department. People uh called me and said, "Did you know such and such happened?" Uh, you know, "A cat was in a tree, Marilyn?" "Well, I didn't know a cat was in a tree, I'm sorry, I didn't know." You know, so we don't know every single thing that goes on. We're only five people, but we entrust the people that we have in leadership to do those things and they let us know what needs to be known when, you know, uh, as pri- as priority. But we trust these people and some of these things we don't know and they let us know or sometimes you let us know. That's why we have, you know, uh, our email address, that's why we make ourselves accessible and you come up here as well and let us know things that sometimes our administration may not be aware of. You know, they're, they're human too. So, um, thank you for taking that time out and letting us know. And I will be probably calling Mr. Kern about some of the things that you all talked about, about parallel parking and things like that, because again, I'm not an engineer, I don't go out and measure stuff when a project comes out, I don't. So I don't know about all those things, but you all are making me aware of some things and I appreciate that. And just um thankful all the businesses that have been invest, investing in East Point. We have a lot of new businesses that come to East Point and um we have a new business owner that's in East Point as well. I don't know if she want me to tell what her new business is, but I'm very excited to have this business in our city. I think it's probably one uh business that's in McComb County that we'll have here in the city of East Point. She could've went anywhere else and uh did this business. Um, and I think it's gonna bring in uh good publicity for our community as well. And um voting is August eighth, the primary for uh mayor is uh August eighth. I went to a event, I believe, yesterday in Detroit. I've been getting, I've always been, uh, I've gotten invites to uh city of Detroit events with other elected leaders just to see uh what they're doing, how they're doing and how it can be a help. I'm from uh the city of Detroit, it's a lot of people that live in East Point that are born and raised in the city of Detroit that moved to McComb County, so that's a, a heart to a lot of people. So you know, where my heart is, I go back to it. Um, I don't forget uh where my heart is, so I go to the community and I help. And I've found out it was a lot of East Point residents there that didn't know who their mayor was and it was election time. And so, um, and they've been here for twenty years, they didn't know it was a primary coming up, they didn't know it was election time, they had no clue what was going on. And so I'm glad that I'm getting involved uh in different areas to let us know what is going on. A lot of us don't even know it's a, a primary and I don't know how we get the word out it's a primary and things like that for something that hasn't happened in a long time. So if you live in the city of East Point, know somebody that live in the city of East Point, let them know August eighth is election day, but you can also vote early. If you're not registered, you can register the same day, I believe. Um, so um tell somebody, we tell everything else, let's tell something. Tell people to, how to, you know, use their voice in this election. So that being said, I'm gonna do, oh, and I'm gonna thank Ms. Amelia, Ritter for showing, you know, um, her passion in the city that she lives in. A lot of adults don't do the things that you have done and, and a lot of us are busy, we can't come to council meetings all the time. And as a, as a, your only thirteen-year birthday is gonna be August sixth, let me put that out there, 'cause she re- reminds me all the time, but um it's a lot of children that, that's your age do not wanna be at a council meeting, they wanna be on a tablet, on Facebook, Twitter, all that other stuff, but you chose to see what's going on in your community and I commend you on that. And I commend all the residents for being a part of this community as well, come to the council meeting, also those that are at home listening, and also uh our elected leaders for um putting time out of their busy schedule to make sure that the city and also administration is ran the way it's been running. That is why we are successful, because of you and those of you in the audience. So saying that, uh, God bless you all. Oh, we have a close session? Y'all, oh, we, y'all hear that from, how, everybody was all excited? Oh, I'm sorry, y'all, we are going to close session, you may stay if you, if you want, but we will be doing some conversation in the back for your best interest. So can I get a motion to go into close session, council?
Lot of question about this, don't, I mean, usually we just send the, this is about the performance reviews, we just send them out on email to everybody and then um, then we just like approve them on an agenda without it included, but we've just like received and filed it. I didn't know what the reason for this was. And I know what the reason for this was.
Mr. Curly was out of town on the date that we had our closed session and everyone else had the benefit of going through everyone, hearing everyone's report at that time. So, I wanted to make sure for purposes of transparency amongst Council to give that same opportunity. However, if you would not like that opportunity and you wanna move in a different direction, I am open to that.
I would like that opportunity.
I don't see why we, I don't wanna have to go in closed session. We could've gave it to him. He can't give you his, what he wants individually, right?
He, he gave, he submitted.
Yeah, he submitted.
For purposes of...
If I do it, I can give it to you and we can, if we wanna go in closed session, we can do it at the next meeting if, if it's necessary.
I don't think it's necessary. Whether you, or Council, wanna do?
It's fine now.
I mean, I don't, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter to me, but I don't...
I'll defer to the Council's decision. Yeah, I guess I was only asking too because I think if we do go in, we'd have, it'd have to be requested. I guess we'd have to go back in with you and with the city manager and city attorney, I think to, we can't discuss the review without them.
Correct.
Yeah, so...
Okay, well, then let's get to the bottom line. Some way I'll get hold of the paperwork, do it and get it to you.
You've already submitted your paperwork. This was just to give, an effort to keep open and transparent conversation amongst all Council because we all had the benefit of one another's, knowing one another's scoring. This was just an opportunity to allow them the benefit of knowing yours. But if Council would prefer...
You want me to tell you what I gave everybody?
No, sir. No, because that, that is a benefit of closed session.
I can tell you it was consistent.
But if Council does not feel that it's necessary, then someone can make a motion to not have closed session and then I will follow up with each of you individually and take care of it from there.
Okay. I can make the motion not to go into closed session.
Sounds good. I'll second that.
Motion in support, please call the roll.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Kamunice?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Uh, yes.
Next is adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Motion to second. You missed her.
You know, she does say that again.
You, the word for tonight was home. Motion in support, I think was what the mayor said.
Yep. Call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Kamunice?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
No.
Well, not the only...
Oh, change my vote. Yes.
Oh, meeting adjourned. I hit that gap on. Have a good night, everyone.